Everybody, I'd like to call to order the House and Community Services Safety and Non-County Board of Commissioners meeting. It is Tuesday, March 31st, 2015, and my name is Commissioner Chavez. Welcome, everyone. So, do we have any adjustments to the agenda?
It's that one.
That one. And so now we're going to go on to public comment. I believe people are still signing up. Because I don't have it back there.
No, thank you. I'm almost done.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we have three people to public comment, and we're going to start with Mr. Chase.
Commissioners, everybody, good morning. It's a pleasure to be here. It's been a long time since I've seen most of you. My name is Ron Chase. I live at 924 Sunnyside Drive in Eugene. I was Executive Director of Sponsors for 23 years, retiring four years ago today. I'm here to speak in favor of Sponsors' proposed housing project on Oak Patch Road. I would like to discuss Sponsors' program from the perspective of neighborhood safety. Sponsors developed its first transitional housing unit in 1988 in a house we rented and later purchased at 767 West 8th. That site currently houses our women's program. In the following 27 years, we built, bought, or rented 11 additional locations, five of which we still manage, all of them in Eugene. These facilities include both transitional and permanent housing. Over 5,000 men and women, I bet it's more like six or seven now, isn't it? Anyway, lots of men and women have resided at one or more of these facilities. Each year, 65% to 75% of these individuals complete the transition program successfully, meaning they have a legitimate source of income, permanent housing, have passed all drug and alcohol screens, and are in compliance with all of these requirements. These numbers are important because they provide an important piece of background information toward understanding the impact on neighborhood safety that Sponsors has had in each of these neighborhoods. In my 23 years of Sponsors, I was unaware of any property or person-to-person crime committed by a Sponsors' client in the neighborhood while they were at Sponsors', not one. I can say this with some certainty because it's been a long been Sponsors' policy to keep track of every client, both in client charts and weekly staff meetings, including information from parole and probation on clients who have stranded, were terminated from the program, or whose parole was violated. I understand why Oak Patch neighborhoods are apprehensive about Sponsors moving into their neighborhood. It's a step into the unknown. I hope my experience at Sponsors can alleviate some of those fears. Sponsors has been providing services to and supervision of ex-offenders for a long time. We have an experienced staff trained in the best practices of offender reentry, and we work cooperatively with parole officers and law enforcement, treatment providers, and other providers of relevant services. As discussed above, we have never had a negative impact in any neighborhood. The Oak Patch neighborhood will not be any less safe when Sponsors opens its doors. There's a couple of things people can do to gather more information about Sponsors' impact on neighborhood safety. The first is to gather the addresses of Sponsors' facilities, and I'm sure that Paul would provide that, and have Eugene Police Department run a records check to identify calls at those individual's addresses. I did this about 15 years ago, and there were virtually no calls at any addresses. We did see occasionally in some of the arterials, people who were arrested walking by, but when you look deeply into those calls, none of them had to do with Sponsors' clients. One could also speak to the neighbors of current and former facilities about what they've experienced, and we had somebody do that also when we were getting ready to go out to Highway 99, and most people didn't even know we were there. And those that did, there was no adverse impact on them whatsoever. Thank you for listening.
Thank you, Mr. Chase. All right, and then we're going to move on to, I can't read this. Myers?
Tree.
Tree.
Good morning. My name is Tree. I live in Acorn Park. I actually live at the end of the block where the facility will be located, and I'm in favor of this facility. I have no association with Sponsors, although I did apply for a job there once and ultimately was not selected, and that does not affect my opinion on this matter in any way whatsoever. I moved here about five years ago, and I worked for Looking Glass. I helped start ITS, which is the intensive treatment service for teens and adolescents with behavioral and mental health issues. And working on that end of the spectrum, I had a really good insight into a lot of the things that go into what happens in one's life when they might be on the other end of the spectrum. So not only that experience, but also personally, I have a biological brother, my next one, Down, who has, in his past, committed a crime, served his time, and is now trying to just move on with his life. He's married, he has a kid. This incident is several years in his past, and it's incredibly difficult for him to move on because he just doesn't get the opportunities with that mark on his record. Certainly, he owns that, he did it, but now that he's done trying to move on, it shouldn't be that difficult for him. So I very much support this project. I know that the crime rate in our area is impacted heavily by the bike path that runs through it, and so there are some things that happen in our neighborhood that perhaps we wouldn't like to have happen that didn't happen in other neighborhoods. This project, when you've completed a reentry program and you're living in permanent housing, the crime rate in that area is lower than in the surrounding area. I welcome that in my neighborhood, especially impacted by that bike path. I would love to have a block in my neighborhood with a lower crime rate. So I really do want to see this. I love what it does for the people who are participating in the project. I love what it can do for our neighborhood. I think that there are a lot of people in our neighborhood that don't quite understand that dynamic on both sides, and underscoring that point, within this last week, there was a sexual predator arrested in our neighborhood who's been living in our neighborhood for years, was prowling the park, and was arrested for actions that he committed in a restaurant on West 11th, and he's from our neighborhood. So unfortunately, I don't think people get to see and put together that dynamic, that people who are going to commit crimes are already living in our neighborhood, and the people who this project is going to serve are actually looking to get away from that and have put in the effort already, and are actually going to be a benefit for me and my neighbors. And I hope that they can come around and see that some of us have. Luckily, out of the blue, I had a conversation with my neighbor across the street who said, "What do you think about this project that's going in?" And I braced myself, because usually that is something that is followed with a lot of negative, misinformed opinions. However, I said, "No, I fully support it. I can't wait for it. I think it's going to be great." And she said, "Oh, good. I think people just don't understand what this is," and I'm hoping that we get to see it go up too. So, thank you for giving us time to speak. I just really think this is a great opportunity for our neighborhood, and we get to look at things like the West University project. It's successful, you know, two years running without any major incidents. I think that one person removed for alcohol use, that's phenomenal over a two-year period. People are expecting so much worse than that, and if the worst thing that we get is somebody kind of falls off the wagon and has to look for eight elsewhere because he committed to something that he couldn't follow through on, let's take it. So, again, thank you. I appreciate this time.
Thank you. And then we have, I'm going to butcher your last name, so I'm just going to say Chip.
My name's Chip Keiger. I'm here today to speak in support of the Oaks at 14th Housing Development. During the three and a half years that I've been a mentor with Sponsors, I've worked with five men who have been previously incarcerated for felony convictions in Oregon. I'm still in regular contact with four of these individuals. After released from prison, all of my mentees benefited from the array of services that Sponsors offers. Transitional housing, assistance in obtaining state-issued identification cards, a resource center to provide help in securing employment and enrolling in college, drug and alcohol treatment, moral recognition therapy, direct assistance from Sponsors' case managers who monitored my mentees' performance and gave them invaluable advice on the keys to successful reintegration into society. My mentees' willingness to participate in Sponsors' mentorship program provided them the opportunity to develop a friendship with an average citizen like me who can offer encouragement and engage with them in one-to-one recreational activities as well as large group activities with other mentors and mentees. All four of the mentees I'm in continuing contact with are living on limited incomes and are just functioning just a few thousand dollars above the current federal criterion for poverty designation. This is a financial reality for many convicted felons trying to fit back into the American economy. Two of these four men have personal histories in which they were able to amass large amounts of cash quickly through criminal activities. Despite the difficult economic conditions that these men find themselves in, none of them have received even a minor sanction from their parole officer through any kind of misbehavior. All three of my mentees who have sex offender convictions are currently enrolled in sex offender treatment. None of the three have reoffended. My mentees consistently pay their rent on time. None of them have been told by landlords to vacate their housing for any reason. Stable, affordable housing is one of the linchpins of successful reintegration for previously incarcerated people. All of my mentees have benefited from housing assistance provided by Sponsors. It would be naive to suggest that an apartment complex housing people with criminal histories would be completely free of risk, but given the track record of success that Sponsors' graduates have demonstrated, I believe the Oaks at 14th Housing Development can provide a well-monitored and supportive social milieu for the residents at minimal risk to the community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Keiger. And then we have Mr. Tom English.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam Chairman and members of the committee, for providing the opportunity to talk with you about the housing needs for persons with criminal histories. My name is Tom English. I live at 2530 Fairmount Boulevard in Eugene. I've lived in this community and been active in it for over 50 years. I'm the immediate past Chair of the Sponsors' Board of Directors, served as a consultant to the United States Department of Justice for more than 35 years, and for the last 16 years as a volunteer chaplain at the Lane County Jail. And during that 16 years, Sponsors has been a critical partner in my work, and I've watched it grow to become really the preeminent reentry program in the state. Sponsors began with a really basic understanding that what people need most when returning to the community is a safe place to live and a job. Everything else depends on that. Some of those resources people have with friends and family when they return, but far too many do not have that, and without Sponsors, these transitional services would not be available, and we have been providing them for over 40 years for this population. However, until now, and with the Oaks project, we have limited success in helping these men and women find permanent, affordable, and safe places to live. The Oaks project will help fulfill this critical need and provide an opportunity for folks to truly rejoin our community. You know, the basic element of a community is where you live. Without that, you are a stranger. Community is the only place where we experience our common humanity, and without that, we are unable to experience the very basic thing of love. I'm going to quote my friend Dave Fromeyer, who passed away recently, because he said it so well, and he said so many things so well. He said, "Love is not the possession of a single religious belief nor a cheap or shallow emotion debased by commercialism and popular entertainment, but the most risky, profound, yet fragile glue of our common humanity. Love illuminates the often hidden paths of who we are. It finds ways for our paths to connect with the paths of others and allows us to live not alone, but with each other." Well into his life, John Adams, the second President of the United States, wrote to a friend in a letter, "I sleep well, appetite's good, work hard, conscience is neat and easy, content to live and willing to die, hoping to do a little good." These men and women, our daughters, our sisters, our brothers and sons, deserve no less than the opportunity to hope to do a little good. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner English. So is there any other public comment? Okay. So then we're going to move on to Commissioner's response to public comment and our issues and remarks. Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. You know, I love it when people who provide public comment, I agree with. But I just wanted to call out one thing very quickly. You know, if you look at the success of an organization, and you look at the founding director, and to me, in Lane County, we have two great founding directors who left tremendous organizations behind them, and therefore, these two are elevated almost to the point of deity, and I include Ron Chase and Carolyn Ternal in that group. You know, each of them with a founding director, each of them left to the second director, a very powerful organization, and a strong foundation to build on. Paul Sullivan and I were the two beneficiaries of excellent founding directors. And Ron, thank you for everything that you've done. I mean, the number of people's lives that you have affected and the number of lives that Dave affected is just a ripple effect that will live long, long after you have sat down and looked into. So congratulations on what you've done. Thank you for choosing Paul Sullivan, helping bring him forward to run your organization. I always will consider your organization, because you so aidfully brought it to a point where Paul could bring it in, bring it into the future. I just want to thank you very much for everything you've always done. Thank you.
Commissioner Lake.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just, I really want to comment, and first of all, thank the folks who came here and testified today, but also, you know, previously, we had some folks who came during public comment who were concerned about this project, and I really want to be thankful to those folks as well. The reason why I bring this up, and obviously, these two projects are completely different, but the project in Springfield of Clearview, off Clearview by Columbia Care Facilities, there was no public process. In fact, the neighbors were not aware of this project until the deal was done. And so I really appreciate the fact that there is a public process happening. We've heard from folks who are supportive, but we've also heard from folks who are concerned. And I think that's very important, so I'm really pleased the process has been established, and we are going from here. And so I want to say thank you very much to staff for putting that, for obviously putting this together, but I think our process as a whole, because I think it's important to hear from folks from both sides, you know, those who are concerned, but yet those who are supportive, and I think that's really important before we move forward, and I'm very proud of that. So, but thank you again for the public testimony today, but also to the gentleman who testified previously during public comment who had concerns. I think that that's very important to note, and I think we should be very appreciative of all the information we're gathering and what the potential concerns are, but I think from the comments today, it's, I think what we have before us is overall a good project, but I look forward to the conversation when we get to this issue.
Commissioner Fox.
Thank you. Commissioner Lake, you said it well about, you know, there's been a great public process, and we've heard from both sides. So I just wanted to take a moment to, you know, thank the folks for coming in today to talk to us, and kind of note that, Ron, I didn't realize we were neighbors before, but I live 304 Sunnyside.
You did.
I didn't realize we were that close together, and so, you know which house it is, and just want to say hi to Tom English, former fellow Eugene Metro veteran, at least I'm a former Eugene Metro veteran. And Tom, you still are, aren't you?
I am.
So, good to see you.
Any other questions? All right, so thank you very much for coming in and talking with us, and we're now going to move on. Do we have any emergency business? So we're here at the contact counter. We have two items, the approval of the minutes for 332015 and Order 15-03-31-01H in the matter of reelecting force of the initial members of the Housing Plus Board Directors to an additional one-year term. Do we have?
I'm going to move forward if you can set up. Or you, I'm moving forward if you can set up.
We have second. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, unanimous. So, continue on to our pass, and we're going to then go on now to administration, Order Number 15-03-31-02H in the matter of authorizing the board director to apply for assistance from the Oregon Housing and Community Services Notice of Funding Availability for the Oaks at 14th Affordable Housing Development. And that's going to be Steve Oaks. And Jacob?
So I'll kick it off, and Paul will say a few words, and then Steve will talk in more specifics about the order. But Chair Rivas and HACSA Board members, I wanted to thank you for deliberating on this request to submit an application for low-income housing tax credits. I've had the opportunity to work on over 50 different affordable housing projects, and I can say without hesitation that this project is the most meaningful project that I've worked on so far in my career. This project's really special because it's a partnership between Sponsors, between Lane County Corrections and HACSA, and our three organizations share a common mission of helping those in our community that need help improving their lives and making a positive contribution to society. In particular, working with Paul, the Executive Director of Sponsors, Donovan, the Director of Lane County Corrections, has taught me a lot about the needs of Lane County citizens that are returning to Lane County after serving time in prison and jail. And with that, I'd just say, before I turn it over to Paul, that again, the work that we've done with the neighborhood has been intentional and proactive, and we will continue to engage and be a good neighbor through the life of this project. So with that, I'll turn it over to Paul.
Thanks, Jacob. Chair Rivas, members of the HACSA Board, thank you for having us this morning to talk about this important project. I guess I'll start by giving you a little bit of history and context as to why this project came about. For many years, as people testified earlier, Sponsors has been providing transitional housing to people coming out of prison. We serve about 300 to 350 people a year coming out of custody that go through our transitional housing programs. So what that means is, for the vast majority of them, we need to find and identify suitable housing, and there just is not enough housing in this community for the folks that we serve, and some of them, because of their convictions, make it extremely difficult for them to find housing. So just to give you a better sense of who this project will serve, these are individuals who are not coming directly out of prison or jail, rather, they're people who've gone through and successfully completed our transitional housing programs or have been referred directly by parole and probation. These are people that are stable, that have the ability to self-finance their rents, and we're looking at targeting a few populations that have special needs that we have additional challenges finding housing for. And those populations are veterans, people with disabilities, and seniors. Oregon now has the infamous distinction of having the largest concentration of over 55 individuals in custody in the United States. So what that means is, we have many people that are older, that have physical issues and disabilities coming out of our correction system. So with that, this project will target those three populations, but also serve other folks that come through our program, that housing is really the primary barrier. This project will offer case-managed housing, will have two POs stationed at the facility, will offer some of the same support services that we have in transitional housing. We're going to have a partnership with Lane Workforce Partnership, and this is really to work with people, most of the people will either have employment, or be in school, or on benefits, but looking at ways that we can raise the bar for folks and help them identify a living wage jobs, get them into school to get degrees that actually lead to better types of employment. We will also offer parenting classes, there will be recreational facilities on-site, and like all of the projects that we've partnered with HACSA in the past, this project is going to be well-built, well-landscaped, and very aesthetically attractive. I think sometimes there are misconceptions about the population we serve and the types of housing that we provide. This will be anything but substandard housing, and I think this is a project that all of us can feel proud about when it's completed. So thank you for the time, and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Some questions?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Paul, I'm not asking for the answer today, but if you would please, I'd like to maybe, if you could potentially maybe send an email or something maybe into the entire board, and maybe what the data suggests, but also maybe your opinion of why, under 55 and older, why they're in custody, why incarcerated, and I'd like to know, I'd like to just see that information.
Yeah.
And so I'm not asking for that answer here, because we have a, we need to deal with this issue, but if you could just maybe respond to the entire board, I'd really appreciate that.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Did you want to go on to Steve?
Yeah. Okay. Chair Rivas, this is the board. I'm going to talk a little bit about the, kind of the nuts and bolts of the project. So this is going to be 54 apartment units, all one-bedroom, kind of ranging in size from about 500 square feet to a little over 700 square feet, and there's going to be a community building also, which is going to include computers where they can do classes, weight room, there'll be bike racks and all that there, so it's going to be very nicely done. There's also going to be an outdoor gathering area. We're going to save some trees on the southern side that's going to have a kind of gazebo area for outdoor gathering. And then this, so the reason we're here is that we're requesting authorization from the board to apply for funds through the state's notice of funding availability, and so this is a competitive process with the state allot's tax credit funding and other state funds. So no other tax credit projects are being proposed from the Eugene-Springfield area this time around, so this is a yearly process. And what we are doing, though, will be competing with projects from Corvallis and Salem. There's kind of three areas. There's the Portland Metro region, the rest of the state, and then Corvallis, Salem, and Eugene-Springfield competes. And then we'd find out around late July, August, if we're successful. A successful application will not only result in Sponsors being able to house more ex-offenders, but it'll bring approximately $9 million into the local economy, which will go to local businesses, construction companies, and workers through the construction of the facilities. And as we've kind of touched on too, we had three neighborhood meetings. We had an initial one that was kind of really a lot of information for all the neighbors, then we had a couple of follow-up meetings that were a little more talking about the design of the project and really getting at the nuts and bolts of things. And due to the feedback we heard, there was actually, we made some design changes to the project. Initially, it was all going to be three-story buildings. Our architects actually did a great job of tearing it down, so all the perimeter buildings are now two-story, and we've even been talking specifically with neighbors where they're budding about, about ways we can do landscape buffering and that kind of thing to make it less intrusive, although everything around it's medium density, there are some, everything's pretty close in that area. So, and some other things we heard were concerns about traffic, pedestrian safety, and so we're going to stay engaged with the neighborhood about, working about getting more sidewalks in the Acorn Park area. There's, they worked with the city just recently to get sidewalks all the way down to West 11th, but then there's no sidewalks going up to 18th, and we're going to stay engaged with them on that. So yes, otherwise, we're also going to be committed to staying in touch with the neighbors and working through any concerns that they do have, and we've heard a lot, and I think we've responded pretty well so far, and I think there's definitely folks that are still concerned, but I think a lot of people, in talking with Paul and folks, are feeling better about the project. Yes, and so with that, I'll open it up to any questions about the project.
Are we authorizing an ongoing process? Hopefully, you'll be successful in getting a tax credit this time. What happens if you don't get it? Will this process allow you to keep on applying until the project moves forward?
It would, and so this is a yearly, a yearly cycle, so if it was unsuccessful, the project could go ahead next year. Where it gets interesting then is with, typically, there's more projects locally, and so this is kind of a unique situation where we have one project moving forward and kind of saw the opportunity there.
So you wouldn't have to come back to us to keep on, this project will stay on track even if some, hopefully, if things will work, but if it doesn't work, it's still staying on track?
We would have to come back to you then next year at this same time, we were going to apply next year if the public thinks.
I would just like to add that this is going to be successful. It's my last hurrah. And I work with Sponsors. And I've worked with sponsors twenty-five years. And I've told you this before, the proudest thing I ever did was being involved with Royal Cross and we developed that. And we developed this.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You know, a couple of things, I had an opportunity to, on January twenty-seventh, at Valley Covenant Church, to be at the public hearing, long the public hearing, a lot of the testimony. And Commissioner Bozovich, Commissioner Reichen, you talked about the public process. This was really a founding part of the public process where the neighbors had a chance to put forward their concerns. Every one of them legitimate, because every one of them had a sincere concern, many of their concerns met. But the best part about a public process like this is it enables people to see what the concerns are and it enables the folks who are providing the project, in this case sponsors, to see what the concerns are and to begin to address them on an individual basis and also determine if their concerns are unaddressable. Well, what I found, I have pages and pages of testimony here, I sat and typed throughout the entire thing and had a good turnout. Representative Boyle was the master of ceremonies, I guess is what you call her. And there was a little bit of acrimony in the meeting, as you would expect, because some people were really legitimately concerned about their children, for instance. And I think by and large, the concerns were all addressable and by and large, you've done a fantastic job, I believe, of itemizing each of the concerns one at a time and addressing them. And the testimony that I heard this morning regarding an oppressed neighborhood of a sex offender who was living in the neighborhood, or currently was living in the neighborhood, you know, that's a part of the addressing the concerns is how you talked at length, and Jacob, you talked at length, about having people in a place where they can, A, succeed and B, be available to receive the help that they need on a regular basis. And I think this project's done a great job. I told Ron Chase when he walked in the room, I wish we had ten more of them. And obviously, that's an exaggeration, but I think Ron's response was that would drive Paul crazy. And so I think at the expense of driving Paul crazy, I'm really impressed with the way that you addressed it. Jacob, you talked about two important people in your life. You talked about your cousin, you talked about your wife, sort of all. And it was very poignant, the way you talked about that. Other people had personal anecdotes that they shared that evening. The public process was amazing. It went on and on throughout the night, a lot of people talked. And I think by and large, most of the people who had concerns left, the ones who stayed till the end in particular, because it's the last two testimonies, they were really memorable. The ones who stayed to the end and left saying, oh, okay, good, I'm glad my concerns were addressed. I believe we'll continue to address people's concerns and more significantly, continue to change people's lives, which is what you're doing with this project, with all the sponsors you're talking about. So enthusiastic, like wholeheartedly behind it. And if there's anything I can do, any steamroller you need to lay in front of?
[laughing] [inaudible]
Madam Chair, I'd like to move approval of Order fifteen dash zero three dash thirty-one dash zero two H on the matter of authorizing the Executive Director to apply for assistance from the Oregon Housing and Community Services. Notice the funding availability for the Oaks and Fort Worth housing.
Second. Second. Any further discussion? So Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed. Yes. All right, so then, we're going to move on to Order number one five zero three zero three zero three H. And I don't believe this is actually an order, is it?
It's not.
Yeah. It's a report.
Report.
Right.
And obviously a video.
Yeah.
So HACSA is part of a collaboration with several housing providers. Cornstone Community has applied for and received that grant from my memorial trust for housing advocacy. And so we're part of this grant. Our main part is the Housing America event, which will be in October, which we've done for several years. Also to promote housing advocacy, we go out and the young man you see on the screen, some of you know, others of you know about, his name is Ethan, he goes to the town. He grew up in HACSA Public Housing. I know this young man since he was twelve years old. He was a friend of my son's, Steph's son. And I'm just very proud of him, how far he's come. And he tells a very compelling story and you see how he feels public housing made a big difference in his life. And so we're going to show this video in many venues, just at conferences and other public events, just to promote and show people how important public housing is. If I can get this to work, I'm very excited for this.
Hello, this is Paul. I'm a Florida student from the East. I'm a principal at a high school. And I also go run for public housing. So I want to tell you a little story, a little back, before I was born, I was a comic writer, so I met, and I left the fairway, the musicals, I started to play. So my daddy, they were very angry, moved here to go do the stand-up. And my mom, she's still alive, my mother-in-law, and my daddy, I'm here to go do it. And my mom moves up there to unact. She was done that, and she decided, she wanted to go to the job. And my grandma, my little brother, I got a job, I was a junior job, I was a junior grad, who said, I'm going to go to the job, or in the story area. So my mom moved that way, I come there, she went to University of Oregon, she did the college, and that guy was one of my father, who was also a student at University of Oregon. So they were married, they missed their baby, and I was two-year-old. I'm dating a sister-in-law. When I was a part of it, my mom and my dad, I was a junior graduate. So we were, I thought I didn't make it high enough, maybe, and I had a lot of, I had a lot of financial support. But my mom was a, my mom was a, I had a lot of, you know, support, I had, you thought about, it was like, it was like, once I was living in, or three times, it was like a house, or a house was like, I was living in the, so living in, I was like, not so bad, I was freezing, or a little bit, and then it would come to be a freeze-out, and to, scared by public housing, through HACSA, we moved there when I was four years old. And it was nice to know that I had a place called home, to know that we had a house. But it was also a really challenging, for a while, living in a family, because it's just kind of, in the, in the house, and that was a real, because it's not going to have all, you know, the life that you're going to do, like, when I was, I think, when they were, so, that was, I was really challenging. And so we, now, more about, and, yeah, so what we're saying, we're here, but so what we're about is that I always think, wait, I'm living in, and we're living in the house, and you want to protect things that you have. And my mom, you know, we're living, in public housing, and we didn't have a lot of food, we didn't have much clothes, sometimes I would even have teeth. But my mom always wanted, I don't know, whatever, I wanted to make it. So after my first couple of, like, two women, my mom was a sister-in-law, she was like, that she might want something, and my daughter, you know, school was not, I don't know, a school that, as well, she's like, I see that, because she was older. And so a lot, I could go to higher schools, wherever the school was across town. And when I was a little, not that, in public housing, we didn't have, we, all of the parents, you know, we didn't have a car, so we all, sometimes, didn't have teeth. So sometimes, you know, I'd get up at three in the morning, I would put, you know, my clothes, it's rotten, my sister didn't make them, but I think it's freezing, stir up, maybe it was really still here. And I would, me and my brother, if we were born by, I knew they said, oh, I'm a little bit, because we were always that baby. I'd take a bus, and take two bus to school, so I'd take two bus to the, to the, so we went to another bus to Fox Hall, and then we went to school by Fox Hall, and at the time, I didn't know, I didn't know, I was a student, I was just not at all, I had to go to school, and that's how I was. But I didn't make a deal, like, I went to the different schools, I got to see how, if you know, I thought that people in my neighborhood, in terms of my, my situation. And so maybe not, maybe picked my, I, maybe more seriously. So every day, you know, I was released about eight days, and I kind of, I took it, elevated my, I don't know, about, I think, my great-grandparents, I mean, that was who I was, my mom, who I was, I didn't do much about that. And then, then again, to me, we found out that they had led up, led up, they had a membership in the house, because they were like, they didn't, so we were, we were to move from our scattered side house to our, the park side house, where it was, everybody in the community was living in, kind of, and you were a lot of, a lot of, to live in, a lot of, to, to, we had more amenities that they, and we had our scattered side house, we didn't have to worry about trash, and we didn't have to worry about anything. We had some of the things that really, really, had, but also that was, some drawbacks to living in the community, I had a great, there was drugs in the community, and I know that I'm, I was, I was, I was more, more, kind of, in that, there was sort of social problems that, and with the community, from what, from what, is that people don't have a lot of problems, if you look at, full, at, and you look at other public housing communities, we have a lot, in different, different communities, we look at, like, project, or in three digits, now, five minutes, and just to back in, pop, I mean, I have to, we didn't have that, we had programmers, we had, some programmers, we had, same thing, that, that, like, on the, and I think that's something we really worked on, towards, even, a lot of jobs, we set down, we did activities, and, and, and not necessarily, growing up, and, and, at first, maybe, the, 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 the,[1720.13]
That was needed and that we needed not only resolution but some kind of enforceable ordinance with that. The difficulty there is who's the arbitrator of what's constitutional? Is it us sitting here, you know, as a subdivision of the state? Or is it a court of law that determines that? And when can we rule that we are not going to enforce or going to take action against what we feel is an unconstitutional law? It's a very fine edge we walk. We've been walking it with the National Defense Authorization Act and whether or not to do an ordinance or not, and it's not much different here. So I really appreciate you coming forward to speak to us. I understand the concerns. There's still time, you know, if our ability to lobby in Salem breaks down, there'll always be time for resolutions and ordinances later similar to what we did with the National Defense Authorization Act. So I just, you know, I believe this entire board strongly supports the Constitution. And I've heard it from Commissioner Sorensen, you know, who has sworn, you know, different oaths as a member of the bar to Commissioner Farr, who's our only member that's served in the Armed Forces and also has been naturalized as a U.S. citizen and has sworn an oath several times in other ways. So I appreciate you coming in and we'll continue talking as when tomorrow moves forward and I'm up in Salem at about 7:00 o'clock in the morning to get ready to testify to the Senate Committee. So I'll probably be seeing you and some of your folks up there in the morning. Any other response or remonstrance? Thank you. Then we'll move on to Item 7B. And that is the report from Travel Lane County. It's their semi-annual report and we have Carrie Westlin, the President and CEO here.
Thank you. Good morning. In your packet, you should have received a semi-annual report and I think I saw it on the agenda as attached to material so the public is welcome to access this too. This covers the time period from July to December, so that's looking back a little ways. It's full of a ton of details. We're not going to walk our way through this document. Today I'm going to pull a few highlights for you in the deck that I brought, but encourage you to read through it and welcome any questions that you might have if you've had a chance to look through it. So I just brought a brief deck to talk about some highlights and move us into the future. Just for the sake of the viewing audience, want to remind folks that we are a private, nonprofit corporation. We were brought into existence to invest transient room tax, the tax that visitors pay on their hotel stays, and to bring more visitors to Lane County. So our mission is really straightforward. It's increase overnight visitors, which gets us more money to work with and we do that by positioning the Eugene Cascades and Coast region as a preferred travel destination. Our budget this year is 2.2 million in total. Just around 2 million of that is transient room tax and we raise another quarter of a million from membership dues and advertising revenues. And this just gives you a sense as to how we allocate that resource across our program areas. So the tourism and leisure marketing programs are the green piece of the pie on the bottom, which forms a base for all of our messaging. And then we have convention marketing and sports marketing. We have integrated marketing that supports all functions, our visitor services, and then our community relations and admin. And I should take just a minute and introduce your agendas like today and I'm traveling like today. So I have two folks with me. I've got Sally McElair, who's our longtime Vice President of Integrated Marketing. She's been with Travel Lane County almost 19 years. And our newest employee is Aubrey Nash. Aubrey is our new Director of Finance and Operations and she's two weeks on the job. So everybody else is deployed. Okay. And then I wanted to just kind of remind us all that we're part of a distribution channel. We are working upstream with seven regional programs, two overlap Lane County, the Oregon Coast Visitors Association, the Willamette Valley Visitors Association, and then of course leveraging the fabulous efforts of Travel Oregon, which is the statewide DMO that's funded by a statewide 1% transient room tax. And then downstream, we're working with Chambers of Commerce throughout Lane County and individual businesses, all of us working in alignment to try and get visitors into Oregon, into Lane County, and into businesses' doors. This gives you a sense of our current indicators, updated from the December numbers in terms of what room tax is looking like right now. We're eight months into the fiscal year and overall room tax is up 12.73%, so still perking along. We're in our fourth record year. And then you've got some hotel data here. You've got both the calendar year data for 2014 because we receive this data by calendar year. And then you've got the very first two months of the year through February. All of the indicators are up although our growth rates have slowed a little bit. And I saw some really big growth rates for other regions and I usually am tracking the regions that we're either on par with or aspiring to. I leave off the regions that we're well ahead of. And so I saw some big numbers and I went back to make sure Smith Travel Research hadn't made any mistakes and pulled last year's data and those poor people last year were suffering. So they get their growth rates and more power to them because they're coming up from some really low numbers. But we're still perking along. Our internal indicators through February are still looking very strong. We've got a little bit of a snag in our consumer contacts, which is primarily partner leads coming out of those partner programs. And part of that is just some cooperative marketing that we did last year that gave us, they sort of opened the floodgates on leads and we're not getting the same volume this year. And the other area is room nights confirmed. And this number is actually looking a little better than it was in December. We were off by maybe 56% in December, but we did book four NC2A championships in last year's number, so we're doing some comparisons to a spike. We're still a little bit concerned about that number. We're going to spend some time talking about that today. Everything else is perking along great. One of our biggest highlights for the six-month period was the redesign and launch of Eugene Cascades Coast.org. This is a project that falls under Sally's purview and the redesign is really looking beautiful. It's very clean, got great navigation, great functionality. And we just pulled some of the front screens for you so that you can see some of the high-impact photography that we're using on that homepage as people come into the site, giving them a rotating slideshow if they stick to that homepage for a minute. And then as you get into this site, we have a very robust site. We've talked about this a lot over the years, over 1,000 pages of content on this site. And so I pulled just a few examples for you that highlight some of the things that we're engaged in right now. Each of these does have a large photo across the top. I kind of scrolled it, whoops, now I want you to go back, sorry. I scrolled it up so that you could start to get a sense of what we're working on. We're working with the regional food industry. This is an industry sector that Sarah does a lot of work with. They're in the middle of a branding process, trying to identify commonalities around the South Willamette region for locals as well as people far away about what's really special about our food. Everything from what we grow here through value-added products in food manufacturing. Kwood is the agency that's helping lead that effort. And we've had kind of a microsite set up over the last year, just in sort of a holding pattern, so that as people are looking for content on local foods, they can get to it through our site. So we have a number of things on this page, from farmers' markets to local food manufacturers to connections to the locally grown guide and beyond. The next thing I wanted to talk about was just our opportunity to take advantage of things as they come up. So we put together a microsite on the Simpsons mural. Once it was unveiled in Springfield, we get quite a bit of traffic to this site. I think we've talked before about what an international icon the Simpsons series is. And so from this site, we not only put together an unofficial Simpsons tour, but then we parlayed that into other things to see and do in Springfield as well. The next example is leveraging the movie Wild, which came out a few months ago. So we put together a pretty robust content section on accessing the Pacific Crest Trail from Eugene, as well as both highway corridors that intersect the trail. So this site is getting some good traffic as well. Then I wanted to talk just a little bit about our ad campaign. I can't remember if this ad was in market when we spoke to you early last fall or not. We've got two themes running on the convention side. One is around local food. Local food's a growing issue for meeting planners because it's important to delegates. And we have some very unique strengths and attributes in this area. And so we use this as a hook to pull planners into a conversation. So we have it running in print. We've got it running digitally. And those all come to a landing page, which features video content and then hits on several areas of interest to planners. The other key theme that we have running right now is around accessible meetings. We have a really strong destination for accessible meetings, everything from LTD transit to our hotel stock to a variety of attributes. This is a growing issue for meeting planners. They've got a very diverse age demographic that they're serving. And as we've made the workforce more and more approachable for folks, we have issues that we need to deal with to accommodate people when they're at conventions and meetings, as well as when they're in the workplace. So another key trigger for us and one that we've got actively running now is digital imprint and then again to a landing page with video content. This was shot at the Spencer View Challenge Course, so a lot of fun working with the City of Eugene on that. On the sports side, within the Sports Commission, we're finding that we're spending a lot more time in the digital environment as well. We do have a full sports site, EugeneCascadesSports.org. It's got a lot of robust content, has a little bit of a different look than the leisure site, but still connected. And so we show a variety of sports venues as people come into that site as well. And then we get into a whole lot of content in the site, venues and different kinds of things. The ad that we've got running, other than our track ad, in the sports genre right now is around the Washington-Jefferson Skate Park. It is an entirely unique venue in the country and so we use it as a trigger. We're also finding, as we work through these ads, that they really kind of parlay from one target audience to another with just a little bit of change-up. So this will play very nicely to leisure audiences as well. And that WJ Park is actually getting a lot of stopover traffic from families traveling I-5 who are well aware that that facility is in place. Again, this goes to digital. It goes to an online landing page. There's full video, so we really encourage people to get on our site and play around. One of the real strengths across the board is the work that we do in public relations. And we've really seen tremendous growth on both the convention and sports sides, 250% growth, 350% growth. And what we're finding more and more along our PR efforts and our social media efforts and really all of our digital content is that we are finding ourselves more and more in the inspiration space and getting out in front of lead generation and getting to planners when they're in their proactive research mode, which is not when they're at their desk and we're trying to call them on the phone or send them an email. It's when they're in an airport or when they're in a hotel room. And so we need to find other ways to reach them apart from our traditional sales mechanisms. And we're actually retooling our staff to some degree, building expertise in the digital environment and content, and working with hotels on how to measure those kinds of results. We're having some very interesting discussions as we head into our board retreat at the end of April. And just the whole way that lead development occurs now is different than it used to be. All leads used to come through the Bureau and more and more hotels get leads directly through vertical channels. And we're spending more time softening up those prospects so that they're responsive to hearing from hotels. So social media is in play across all target markets. Before we leave sports, I wanted to introduce you to Champ. Champ is our new bobblehead. Champ travels throughout the destination, bringing all kinds of interesting things to prospects through our social media channels. He was recently in the Hatfield Down and Complex, nosing around there and visited with Coach Helfrich's bobblehead. And I don't know how Coach feels about this, but Champ's a little bigger and I think a little more enthusiastic too. So you'll probably see more about Champ in the future. Getting back into our leisure marketing, this was our fall campaign. It was a pedal-for-a-pino campaign, tying together our fabulous wine product with arts, culture, and local food, in print, online, and on the web again. And then of course, the Eugene Ale Trail ad. I think you're all familiar with the Ale Trail that we launched almost a year ago. And this is an ad that kind of season on our trails, both our Ale Trail, our fabulous geo tours, and then beer-loving bikers of all types, because apparently there's some kind of affinity going on between biking and beer drinking.
Imagine that.
Our proxy ads, when I was here with you last, I showed you our spring campaign last year, which was a real close-up of Proxy Falls. It's one of the best campaigns we've ever run. And it was leveraging Oregon's Seven Wonders campaign. They're taking that campaign into year two. We've retooled the waterfall ads a little bit. We've got one sample here and another one to follow, where we will continue to leverage the work that Travel Oregon is doing. And then we'll run the dune buggy ad again. This ad was a phenomenal driver for us. We had people calling our 1-800 number wanting to book dune buggies. And one of the things we've really found, we may have talked about this last fall, is that Portland loves the Oregon coast and they spend a lot of time on the North Coast. Florence is really the northernmost spot on the coast that you can get into a dune buggy and Portlanders are really loving this idea. So we're gaining some real good recognition of Florence as a destination in the Portland market, which makes us really happy. Wanted to spend just a minute talking about the Adventure Center. You all get our board packet every month. I don't know if you noticed, last month we have a very detailed report on the Adventure Center. It's a five-year lookback for the Travel Lane County Board of Directors and it provides a lot of details and data on the performance of the Adventure Center in its first five years. And a couple of the interesting things that we discovered was in addition to the tens of thousands of visitors that we've served there over five years, we've served over 3,500 locals at community events as well. And locals love the Adventure Center, gets a lot of patronage when people are going out to the forest and they need a parking permit or they need a Lane County Parks Pass. A lot of folks will come in to this locale to pick that up. And the other thing that we really discovered when we look back at the first five years are how many things came to life that we've used to market the destination that we probably could not have done without having the staff team in place that we have at the Adventure Center. So the geo tours were completed out of this location in conjunction with volunteers. A postcard series, I think I brought you some of those last time we visited. Our Ale Trail Passport Program was partially developed at the Adventure Center and is redeemed there. We do a McKenzie Directory that goes into all hotel and lodging rooms along the McKenzie Corridor. That work was done here. The Fishing Guide to Lane County that you have in front of you, which is a brand-new product, was developed out of the Adventure Center. And one of the really neat things about this piece, which is 65 places to fish in Lane County, it's the first time that the State Department of Fish and Wildlife has done this with a local DMO. They actually put our logo on this piece and really looked to our staff team to help them identify all of the areas that should be listed in this piece as well as accessing them. So we're really, really proud of it and appreciative to the state and to our team at the Adventure Center. We do retail promotions there, referral rewards, and then get a lot of staff support for many ongoing programs like our calendar of events, social media. And soon, in just a couple of weeks, we'll be launching a new Bike Visitor Center, the first bike visitor center in the country that we're aware of. It's dubbed Mike the Bike. It'll be premiered at the Governor's Conference on Tourism and it was funded through a grant from Travel Oregon. And we're very excited about it. We'll be able to get out into the parks and help people when they're feeling quite inspired to get out and do even more. Wanted to highlight just a couple of events that have actually taken place since December. And the first is Bike Magazine's Bike Bible. Every January, Bike Magazine publishes a Bible on all the new products. So they are testing bikes. And in order to test these bikes, they choose a destination somewhere in the country that they feel is going to inspire their readers. And this year they wanted to come to Oregon and they thought they wanted to go just over to the Bend area. And so Travel Oregon and Travel Lane County convinced them that, no, actually, they should go to Central Oregon, but they should also come down the McKenzie Corridor and see the trails in the Oak Ridge area. Commissioner Stewart has the hard copy. And then they also did a digital version. And some of the photography is the same and some of it changes up. But I'm sorry that you can't see how these photos blow. You really need to visit the site on your computer because the coverage is phenomenal and it was so amazing and so clear to us that it was our trails that inspired this crew from Bike Magazine because of all the big full-color spreads, either in the Oak Ridge area or along the McKenzie Corridor. And they have a few images from the Bend area as well, but it was really our part of the mountain biking system that inspired them. They spent time at Horse Creek Lodge and have a great shot, I think, coming up next at Double Diamond with, it's a very star-filled sky, and they were just enthralled with their stay here. So we encourage people to get online and check that out. And then the other project that we've been spending some time talking about lately is Next.TV. It's a video program. It's shown in-flight. It's also shown on Fox 12 in the Portland market. The first segment was on Florence. It's about 20 minutes long. It's had over 65,000 views. It's referenced in your written report. And I think you have access to a link to that video as well as the Bike Bible content. Maybe not the Bike Bible content, but the video link I think is listed in your report. Just wanted to move into, you've seen this screen before, we have a lot of stakeholders and we have a lot of things we're trying to keep in mind as we're positioning the destination for the marketplace. So we're thinking through mode and if we forget, you hear from that mode. So we try not to forget. A lot of different interests that motivate travel and a lot of geography to cover. One of our priorities for this year was to really speak to community brands and help our individual communities find their place on our brand platform. We know it's important to civic leaders and community leaders to see themselves reflected in the work that we're doing. And so we've really taken that to heart and have a couple of examples of how we've been doing that this year. And the first is in our visitor guide cover. So they're hot off the press. You each have one of four covers in front of you. And this is our Springfield cover. And so you can see we've actually put the name Springfield on the cover. The next cover is our McKenzie River, which is a beautiful shot. I'm sorry it doesn't show better on this screen, but really incredible shot, probably on the Delta Old Growth Trails, I'm guessing where that was taken. Our coastal shot, we've gone from dune buggies to cycling and some of those Rocky Headlands because we like to remind people that we have a lot of both. And then the last shot is a partnership we have with the University of Oregon. They actually pay to have an overrun of our guides done and do a cover on our guides, so are using our visitor guides for their key audiences as well. And then I have just a roundup, a few things that I didn't get into that. I think you all have seen the regional updates we've done. We did one on the McKenzie Corridor that we emailed out several months ago, one for Florence and one for Springfield. They kind of look like this and they're full-color PDFs and they're packed with all kinds of stuff and we send them to you in an email as they're done. What we're doing with this regional update is just kind of what I just touched on. We're taking them out to council, meeting with city councils around the county, making sure they know what we're doing around their individual communities and that they understand how room tax works. They clearly know you're funding our work when we get through with those sessions and what we're bringing to the table on your behalf in terms of supporting their individual communities. And those presentations have been very, very well-received. On the convention and sports side, we've been doing a lot of work around inspiring new business. So Janice Ross, our VP of Convention Marketing, has done a lot of work within the tech sector. So you might recall that there was an Indie Game Con last fall. They're working on a couple more big events coming up in the future and a lot of seeding of new sporting events. It's kind of like the Wordcrafters event that we talked about last year, where we're really creating something brand-new. So in addition to going out and trying to bring events that move around into the area, we're also working with local community to create brand-new things. Over at the coast, we've worked on the biathlon and we're trying to get a Dragon Boat event over there. So very, very successful. Janice is actually serving on the National Association of Sports Commission's Board of Directors, as well as on the statewide Meeting Planners International Board. You might recall we worked on Duck Downtown last fall, trying to do some activations in the downtown event on home football game weekends and worked with Amtrak on game train fares to allow visiting Duck fans or maybe even opposing fans to ride the rails into Eugene. And we hope that they get to continue to have an opportunity to do that in the future as well. And then wanted to make sure that you are aware that we have the honor of hosting the Governor's Tourism, Governor's Conference on Tourism, April 11 through 14, coming right up. That's where we're going to launch Mike the Bike. We're doing a sports summit for our statewide colleagues the Saturday prior to that conference and that has very strong registration as we look at ways to cooperatively market Oregon as a sports destination. And then the Monday night, the 13th, is our community night. And we are hosting 400 delegates from around the state at Nantossi's headquarters in the WIT with local caterers and getting them out into the neighborhood following that. So you'll see actually an invitation to that event if you would like to attend. We'd love to have you there. And then I also really seriously want to see you like writing or typing because we really want you at our annual luncheon this year. We've gone from a dinner to a luncheon. It's going to be on Monday, May 4th. That's the first day of National Tourism Week. And we have the honor of having the Chair of the U.S. Travel Association make remarks at that luncheon, who happens to be Earl Todd Davidson from Travel Oregon. And then we'll have some awards celebrating the local industry and local leaders. So lunch, Monday, May 4th. And then I did want to, when we do our annual report, we bring you a full board roster. We don't do that this time of year, but we have several new board members that I thought you might be interested in hearing about because they're from all over Lane County. We have Mark Justina from Tokati came on the board a few months ago, so we're really excited to have Mark on the board. We have John Borowski from La Perla and Bette Angiani on the board now. Travis Palmer, who's the Cottage Grove Chamber Exec, is on our board. Two hoteliers on the board, J.B. Carney's the GM at Holiday Inn and Jennifer Nelson at Inn at the Fifth. And then Aaron Reynolds, the new City Manager in Florence, is joining the board. And Dr. Lisa Ahern from Lane Community College will be joining the board as soon as she's voted on in about 10 days. The board is going into retreat at the end of the month. We've got an interesting list of topics. Facility development is certainly on that list, both in terms of sporting facilities, convention facilities, a bunch of organizational issues. We certainly welcome any input that the county has. I think Commissioner Farr is planning to be in attendance. You know, our door is open to commissioners if you'd like to join. We have to watch out for whatever happens around Oregon meeting laws, but would love to have anyone there that would like to be there. And then I'll just wrap with our continued focus on content mapping across channels. Sally and I just returned from a three-day conference in Sacramento. It was all on digital technology and digital marketing. We're doing some really great work. We felt really ratified and we've got a lot of things that we can continue to work to implement. So we've got a good, solid list and we're pretty excited to get after it. Continuing to work with regional food, the tech sector, not only in seeding new opportunities, but we've talked about getting our assets onto the economic development table, all of the photography we have, the video, the fabulous resources we have on the destination, how we work with other industry sectors to help them recruit talent, how we work with the acronym that Carrie doesn't say in public for the Regional Economic Development Organization --
Don't say it.
-- to bring new businesses in. And so we are, I'm actually pulling together a tech sector group in conjunction with workforce Lane's work to talk about how to brand the area specific to the tech sector. So really, really excited to be doing that. So that's my quick summary. I'm so glad I'm here because once I start working on this report, I don't stop until I actually get in the room. And so I'm just really happy to be here, to share, and I'll go back and think about the things I forgot to tell you, but there you have it. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Commissioner Liken.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Very good report, Carrie. Really appreciate it. Couple of questions I have, and I don't know if this is causing challenges maybe with the room issue or not. So have you been able to analyze or maybe the data on the fact that it looks like Boston received most of the Cascade snow? And so this has really been the last couple of years with regarding both HUDDU, which is not in Lane, I don't think HUDDU's in Lane, it's right on the edge of Willamette.
It drives room nights in Lane County and then Willamette's in Lane County and drives room nights in Plymouth County.
Yeah, so this is two, this is two years running that I believe HUDDU has not opened at all. And I don't think Willamette's opened either for two years in a row. Mount Ashland did, which just surprises me. But so I was just wondering what the effects are on the tourism piece here. And also, have you had the opportunity to maybe have a conversation with our local delegation, especially maybe with Senator Byer, Representative Lively are involved in transportation? But it looks like the feds have made a conscious decision that you want to fund passenger rail or you want to deal with passenger rail, you fund it. And it looks like the budget now has taken the Eugene to Portland route out. And I don't know if you've had an opportunity to connect with our delegation and maybe if you can maybe talk about what that could mean as well to the tourism business here locally.
Sure. Well, first let me just say the snow issue is very serious. We have a Snow Sports Industry Association in Oregon. Sally served on that board for many, many years. Sally's an expert skier, former ski instructor. So it's an issue really near and dear to our hearts and it certainly is having an impact on the viability of that product. And that product is, that's big. It draws a lot of people and it certainly adds to our persona as a visitor destination. I think Bend has actually done okay this winter. Their numbers are looking pretty strong. They had some of the only snow there is. We were over there skiing because we couldn't ski Willamette past. And so I think, you know, that there are some winners and some losers. Overall, we're all losers because we're all starting to worry about our water. And I live in the country. And, and I live in the country, out, out in the Veneta area. I'm on a well. I'm worrying about the aquifers and the snow melting and everything like everyone else. So, I think it's, it definitely is important for the tourism sector and it's important in much broader ways too for all of us who, who live in Oregon. We're, we're, we're feeling even luckier than ever though, aren't we? That we do live in Oregon and not a lot of other places in the country. Some who have no water at all and some who are, they are getting all of our snow and we don't really want to be there experiencing that either. We just want our fair share. So, I don't have any definitive numbers for you on what those economic impacts are, but I am guessing that the snow sports industry is probably doing a little number crunching and we'll be seeing some things come out of that. In terms of passenger rail, my understanding, what's happened traditionally is that state ODOT has funded passenger rail to the tune of around 10 or 12 million dollars a year and that is bare bones budget. Washington State puts a lot more money than that into rail. Oregon's really kind of leveraged Washington for many, many years, done the bare minimum to keep passenger rail going and it is, you know, it's important traffic for us. Right now, what I understand is that the ODOT budget cut that in half to about 5 million and it's just not enough. So, I don't know that we can totally blame the feds for this one because I really think it's partly a state budgeting issue. And you're right, we should all be talking to our legislators about that because for what we get in return, when you're looking at Transportation Department expenditures, getting our entire passenger rail system for 10 million dollars is a bargain. And they, they really, they need to make that one right. We have a lot of visitation coming in and out on that rail corridor and there are a lot of people who live here who go out and in on that rail corridor. And their numbers have been looking pretty good. They've shown good growth over a good number of years. So, I don't, I know it's just probably pressure for other needs, but I think that one is, is important.
Thank you. That's the questions I had and really appreciate the work that you and your staff do. Thank you.
Commissioner Stewart.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Carrie, once again, thank you for all the great information on the hard work, exciting things taking place in East Lain County rural. I had the opportunity over the last few months to tour several different businesses and I think you're already ahead of me, but I wanted to share some thoughts specifically around agriculture. We have some real leaders in East Lain County, probably in Lain County as a whole, but folks that are global in their outreach. Fall Creek Nursery won, the Brazeltons and they're pioneering, you know, they're worldwide and they're, I think, may possibly be the number one blueberry nursery in the United, or in the world. So, and then, I got, had the opportunity to tour Log House Plants and they're doing some amazing stuff with grafting and some of the neat varieties that they, you know, you've probably seen it, they're what, they're ketchup and french fries plant.
Were they at the Ford Leadership Program that we were at? Was that the, were they, when we did the community roundup for the Ford Leadership Institute?
I'm not sure if, if they're involved with it or not.
Are they in Walterville?
No, they're, they're up East of Cottage Grove, up at Cracker.
Okay. Then I'm not, I need to round them up.
But, you know, so they're here, they got this wonderful marketing of ketchup and fries plant, which is a tomato at the top and potatoes in the bottom and.
That's pretty amazing.
And they also have super plants that they're, with their grafting, they're able to put a really strong, healthy root system together with, with grafting on the top, you know, I think various varieties of tomatoes or whatever plants in their, just for lack of, not, not comprehending the exact number, but they're, I think they're producing twice the amount of vegetables and produce than, than the common plant is without that, that work. And so, I just got to thinking, you know, here we got these wonderful special places that they're working hard. Ms. Doyle, she talked about how she's been going to international conferences and I'm thinking, you know, they may have connections to be able to bring some of those here locally. Might be an opportunity to boost some overnight stays and be able to highlight some of the great work. I don't know if Julie's still on the, Julie Gons is still on the board, but maybe we could press against her to come on and help us. This looks like a, a great area to, to expand and do some marketing around.
Well, thank you for highlighting that company because I'm not familiar with it. And one of the most amazing things about living in your county and marketing it is that for 18 years, I am still learning new things in this county. It is an amazing place. So, we'll add that one to the list.
Commissioner Liken. Mr. Chair, real, real quickly, just received a message that the Amtrak funding is back in the budget.
Aren't we powerful? Wow.
Talked about it and it happens. Just amazing.
What else would you like?
Okay. Commissioner Sorensen.
Thank you very much for your presentation. It's always very thorough and educational and I'm always taking these publications home and going, wow, let's do this, let's do this. So, there's plenty, not only for the visitor, but as you pointed out, even for long-time residents, there's just a lot to do and a lot of fun things to do with your family, whether they're visiting from other areas or right here. So, it's always good. I did want to zero in on that, that Amtrak train thing a little bit. You're right, Washington has put a tremendous amount of money, state money into the corridor, their corridor. And I'm told because of traffic congestion and the fact that the Portland Airport is located outside of downtown Portland as our most airports and the SeaTac Airport is actually quite far outside of downtown Seattle, that the commuting time for people, business people that have something in downtown Seattle and downtown Portland, the commuting time is actually faster to take the train than to drive or to fly and rent a car or fly and take public transit. That they, the downtown to downtown works really well for, for the Seattle Portland. But, that doesn't exist for Salem to Portland or Albany to Portland or Eugene even to Salem or Eugene to Portland. So, it doesn't really work in our density the same way it works for our friends in Washington. So, explains through a series of governors, a series of legislatures that, that they're putting more money into it than we are. And that's separate from the fact that they have more money than we do. They actually have put more money relative to how much money they have. But I'm thinking that there hasn't been much discussion of all this new alternative transportation and the, and the threats that exist to this because now you have Bolt Bus, you have Uber, at least in a lot of places, you have Zip Car, what's the other one? Car to Go. You have all these different ways for people to get around and the train technology is maybe fun for some people that have the time, but most people fly into Eugene Airport or they fly into the Portland Airport and rent a car and come down here, I would imagine in terms of how people get here. And most people drive their own cars. So, does it really make sense for us to put a premium on that? I know it's popular. Back in the day, that is to say more than 20 years ago, state legislators would take the train to Salem. They don't do it anymore. The timeline, it just isn't, doesn't work. It's too much time. So, what, do you think we're like really investing? Because that money could go to lots of other things in, in, in terms of tourism and other public purposes.
Well, I'm not a transportation analyst, so, I mean, you just get my perspective like any other, any other citizen, but I don't know that you, how much you would get for 10 million dollars in another transportation project. I mean, really, those are, those are big numbers. Would visitors stop coming here? Probably not. I don't think anybody's coming here specifically because we have Amtrak. But I do think that some people are really attracted to train travel and I've ridden the train to Portland and it's really not, it, I lucked out, it was on time both ways. So, it was actually a very, very enjoyable experience. And some of those transit times could come down if the train's able to accelerate in the Oregon corridor the way it can in the Washington corridor.
Is that what the money is used for? To improve the crossings?
No. That 10 million is operating. That's an operating budget.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. But, you know, communities, Salem just quieted its rail zones, Eugene's talking about how to get that done. That will allow some acceleration of train speed and that will start to reduce transit times as well. So, I, you know, I'm probably not the best person to ask about, is it a good dollar-for-dollar return? We know the numbers have been going up. We know it's a popular option. People come into our office and call us all the time and ask us about rail. We are without question a drive market and the vast majority of our visitors come in by auto, whether it's their own auto. We do see a lot of patronage of Portland International for a variety of reasons, but we also are in our fourth or fifth year of growth at Eugene Airport in terms of passenger deplanements too. And so, frequency and connectivity, those things contribute to patronage of the route. And it's the same thing for rail travel. As you saw the train sets come on, you saw the ridership go up. So, part of that is just, there are bigger picture discussions around which transportation options you're, you're championing than how many tourists are coming.
I've been, I've been curious about the decision that we as a state have made to connect the Eugene to Seattle train system in, with the Amtrak marketing. That Amtrak, which runs a national train system and runs this train under contract with the states of Oregon and Washington. And yet, what it does is it, it fuels the idea that, that because Amtrak's on-time performance is so lousy and they get blamed, I think appropriately, for, for bad on-time percentages, yet the state train, the Oregon-Washington train is very on-time, has tremendous statistics to back up their, their on-time reliability. And, and yet, we've, we've tied ourselves to Amtrak. And so, when you say, well, do you want to take Amtrak to Portland? Well, if you're taking the northbound from Eugene to Portland, your odds of getting onto an Amtrak national train, a big train, and getting to Portland on time are just about zero. But every morning at 5:30 and every morning at, I think it's maybe 8:30, there's an Amtrak leaving Eugene, a state-funded Amtrak that is on time almost every day. And so, I just wonder why we're marketing it through Amtrak? When, if we called it the Oregon-Washington train or the Cascade Corridor train or we, we somehow disassociated it from Amtrak, we'd have a better way of getting people to go, oh yeah, I would take that.
Well, it's interesting that you bring that up. They actually do have sort of a layered marketing campaign. So, the Co-Starlight system is marketed a little bit differently. And both Amtrak and Oregon Passenger Rail Department have marketing programs. They do, they do work cooperatively and some fund, some elements of marketing and some fund the other, although there, there are a lot of intricacies there that I probably don't fully understand and can't articulate. I know the on-time issues are really not always Amtrak's fault. We have, we have freight on those rail lines and the, the rail lines themselves are not owned or controlled by Amtrak. And I think the public knows that generally. It doesn't make it any easier when your train is late. But I, you know, I, I don't know that the state could market and operate its trains for 10 million dollars.
Yes.
Probably not. I mean, they're, they're, they're buying into a operational system that Amtrak's providing and they're probably getting a bargain deal for it.
And by the way, is that a 10 million annual appropriation or is it a biannual?
Good question.
Okay.
I'm not totally sure.
Okay.
Do you know Sid? Read your email. Is that biannual or?
Yeah. Let us know, Sid.
I'm looking.
In the meantime, Commissioner Farr.
You know, Mr. Chair, I had questions about Travel Lain County that didn't diverge from the presentation that you made. I don't have time from now. We have a lot of people waiting down the agenda, so I'll, I'll ask them in a separate venue.
Thank you very much.
Okay. Before we leave, the topic, I had a couple of questions. I just wanted to clarify a couple of things. In the report, on the right side, you've got a shaded section of the report, you know, and it has some nice graphs in red. The FY15 is quite often, down below it says semi-annual book, July through December. In the previous fiscal years, is that the total fiscal year or just the fiscal year in that same time period?
No, these are comparisons, light period to light period.
Okay. It wasn't quite clear with the way that was noted.
Sorry about that.
So, I wanted to make sure I understood that correctly. And, yeah, I just want a real quick note that yes, biking and beer do go along very well. It's the one thing that Senator Pozanski and I agree on completely.
Always good to get it straight from the target market.
Yeah. But in addition to that, you know, Commissioner Sorensen touched on this, but, you know, there's some real emergent, emergent software and technology that's, that's competing now in the marketplace for, with traditional systems. Uber's competing with traditional taxis. Airbnb's competing with traditional bed and breakfast and hotels in, in general. And one of the concerns I'm, I'm hearing from, you know, Edwin K., Adam Florence and other people is how is that regulated, controlled? Are those folks paying transient room tax? Is there any discussions? And this gets to the state side of the legislature. Is there going to be any regulation of, of those sort of things? And it's somewhat interesting because we actually have benefit from the Airbnb system here in Lain County as it employs, you know, several hundred people out in Veneta. So, you know, where, where is that moving in the future, some of these new technologies and new softwares and competing with the traditional lodging market?
So, not getting into the transportation end, but the lodging end. The Ubers, the VRBOs, the Homeaways, the OTA platforms, there is legislation that was passed the last session that does require collection and remission of transient room tax. So, the issue is an enforcement issue. It's not a statutory issue. I've had several conversations with the Oregon Restaurant and Lodging Association about this because they're the industry's primary mover in terms of legislation. And they feel very, very comfortable with the bill that was passed last session. The question is who's going to enforce it? And we've had these discussions at the local level. The city looks to you. Your team looks to the city because the city's who receives the tax. And so, who is going to first identify all of the individual homes in the marketplace and then educate them as, some of them don't even know they're not complying with rules. They don't even know that there are rules. One of the things that I had hoped would come out of the state legislation is that the platform itself would be required to force compliance by any dwelling that it's marketing. So, if you have a vacation home and you're on the VRBO platform, VRBO requires that you show them your TRT number that's issued from whatever your local jurisdiction is. And this does happen in Hawaii. I've been told it happens in Hawaii and in Florida where the platform is actually held accountable so that the governmental agencies only have, you know, five, five people that they're chasing down to make sure that things downstream are going well. I don't think that the, the legislation that was passed last session speaks to that, that the, that the platforms themselves are on the hook. But I think there are ways to get to it and there are hundreds of Airbnb units in Lain County. And, you know, I think those that are aware of the requirements probably readily comply with them. It's just how do you track them all down? Because they're not always, you can't always see the individual contacts on these platforms in order to chase them down and help educate them as to what the rules are. The Ubers, you know, that's a whole different deal and I think the city's, you know, doing what it can to create a common platform between regulated transportation and getting Uber as regulated as possible for health and safety reasons. And I think certainly as an industry, the hospitality industry wants travelers to be safe, whether we're talking about an accommodation unit, whether it should have smoke detectors or a transportation unit and what, what the environment is that, that passengers placing themselves in. As these sharing platforms grow in popularity, you know, they need, they need to step up to the regulatory environment. That's my opinion, so.
Commissioner Farr, you had a comment?
Actually, just a, yeah, a comment. You know, we're just barely scratching the surface of the things that we hear about in board meetings at Travel Lain County. And I think a 30-minute, we're already almost double the time allocated to this, but a 30, 30 minutes doesn't even give us a, a small chance to look through the window that you're able to provide for us regarding tourism in Lain County. It's important. It's an important part of our economy. And once again, 30 minutes, we need to hear from you for hours on end, I think, which will.
Oh, I'm sure your colleagues would really enjoy that. Thank you, Commissioner Farr.
Well, you know, they should. And I'll mention that Ms. Poling is also on the board and Mr. Mokhaisky frequently attends the board meetings. And you can also agree with me, I'm sure, that so many of the things that we talk about, once again, we talked a little bit about Amtrak and rail travel. We talked a little bit about the competition regarding lodging in Lane County. There's so much more. And you do so much to bring people into Lane County, increasing overnight stays. There are many ways that you do it. And you didn't even really talk about, Mike, the bike.
I know. There's a lot I didn't talk about. And I saw your guys' eyes rolling a little bit just for the stuff I did talk about. But if there's a topic that you want discussion on, happy to come anytime. Welcome the opportunity. Try not to burden you guys too much by enduring me too often, but if there's anything that we can do on a topic-by-topic basis, we're very, very happy to do that, so.
Thank you very much, Carrie. And thanks for all that you do. And I want to thank you for coming. And before you leave, I just want to clarify that cycling goes with beer because you burn the calories. So drink the beer, you don't drink the beer and then cycle.
That's right. You've got a carb reload. You're reloading carbs after exercise. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. So with that, we'll jump back into our regular scheduled agenda, which has gotten rather mixed here. And we'll look first to see if there's any emergency business. Mr. Mokhaisky?
There's none.
Thank you. And we will come up to the consent calendar, which is routine items that are heard under one motion by the board. And you can go to our website to get details on any single item. Is there a motion to approve the consent calendar?
Move approval. Second.
Been moved and seconded. All in favor of the consent calendar, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Pass unanimously. And then we will move on to county council announcements. And I don't believe that there are any announcements from county council. There's no need for an executive session today. And then we'll move to county administration announcements.
I have a few announcements, Mr. Chair, if you'd like me to do those now. I think they can be relatively brief. An update from last meeting, we spoke about the Hearing Center. I provided the board an update and I sent you a follow-up email with that information. There were some questions at that time that you'd asked that we follow up on. I included responses in that email, but I'll just share with you here in the public meeting. There was a question about the number of clients that were moved from the Hearing Center to other locations. There were 11 individuals, 11 clients moved from the Hearing Center. Five of those clients were placed in facilities within Lane County and six of the clients were placed in facilities outside of the area. And that was required because there were no local facilities available to accommodate those six clients. Okay, so 11 individuals moved, five stayed local, five were moved to other locations outside of the community. There was a question asked about whether or not these individuals have guardians. None of the 11 clients have designated guardians. So we did not, we're not in a position of needing to contact the guardians, but in some cases, their family members. Where the 11, where any of the 11 clients provided us a release of information, we were able to contact family members as soon as possible related to those moves. If a client has not provided a release of information, then we do not have the ability to share that information with family members or others. So happy to answer any questions on that, but just again, a follow-up on the Hearing Center. And then I will add, since that time, and I shared this information via email with the commissioners, that we received notification on March 23rd, last Monday, that Shelter Care will not be pursuing the hearing to keep their license at the Hearing Center. So they're not appealing that decision by the state. Our staff at Health and Human Services is now moving quickly in coordination with the state to secure another vendor to open the Hearing Center as soon as possible. Any vendor contract would come before the board for the Board of Commissioners to approve that in a public meeting. So we're working actively on that front. We're also continuing to work to find placements within Lane County for the individuals that were moved out of the Hearing Center, those six individuals. We have some appropriate beds that are opening up in, within Lane County, and we believe that we should be able to bring at least a couple of the clients back before the Hearing Center is reopened with a new provider. So again, happy to answer any questions on that. A couple of other updates for you. I wanted to provide an election update, and we've done this at the last few meetings for the May 19th election. And I received an update today that the voter's pamphlet will be about 28 pages long. I think the board knows this and the board had requested that we do a voter's pamphlet for the May 19th election. This is the first time in about 20 years that Lane County has done a voter pamphlet. So we'll have a 28-page voter pamphlet with 33 candidate statements and three arguments. There are two ballot initiatives. One is the vehicle registration fee, of course, and the other is a charter from Westphal. So there are three arguments that were submitted in favor of the vehicle registration fee. There were no arguments submitted in opposition to the county measure. We'll have 266 ballot styles for this election, so a significant number of different ballot styles that are, that will be printed. We're completing the proofing of the voter's pamphlet by the end of the day today. Out-of-country ballots will be delivered to the post office on Friday, and we're currently also preparing the test ballots for this Monday for testing of the ballot tabulators. So a quick election update for you. The last thing I wanted to share was today is March 31st, last day of March, of course, and March is Developmental Disabilities Month. So we're at the last day of celebrating recognition for that, nationwide recognition. And I wanted to share with you the opportunity that I had last Friday too, is we've been doing monthly lunches with the county administrator. I've had an opportunity to go around and engage and break bread with different staff and operations in our organization. So Friday I had the opportunity to meet with a number of staff in our Developmental Disabilities Division. They reside here in the Public Services Building on the ground floor. And if you haven't been there, I really would encourage you to go. It's a, they have some wonderful paintings in there from a program, an art program, and they have a gallery on Third and Lincoln, which I'm looking forward to going and seeing. And they have a number of these paintings that they rotate in and out of our office, our Developmental Disability Division office in the Public Services Building. So it's just a really beautiful environment with colorful paintings that individuals with developmental disabilities in our community have done through this art program. And then they sell these paintings and the proceeds from the sale of those paintings go to fund this art program for individuals with developmental disabilities. But I thought I'd just share with you a little bit about that program and highlight the great work that our staff in Developmental Disabilities is doing. Of course, we do case management services for adults and children with intellectual and developmental disabilities. We provide system, a system of support, training, care, monitoring, protection, and crisis response for individuals in our community, again, children and adults with developmental disabilities and placement into foster care and ultimately adoption for children with developmental disabilities. We've seen a significant increase in the caseload for, of individuals who are now enrolled and have access in the programs locally. Our caseload has grown to over 2,000 individuals in Lane County, and it's a significant increase from 2013 when, with the Affordable Care Act and the State K Program, there have been expanded services made available to individuals with disabilities, which is a wonderful thing. But of course, has created a challenge for our staff. And so caseloads, in many cases, for our staff can run 80 to 90 individuals with developmental disabilities per case manager. So we have a heavy caseload there. Our staff is just doing an outstanding job of working through new individuals enrolled into programs, managing the cases that are currently there. The, so we continue to work on that. There is some positive news, I think, on the outlook on that front, that we are hopeful in our work with the state that we'll gain some additional funding to fund an additional staff person, to reduce those caseloads and attend to the added administrative work from the K Plan implementation. Our hope is that we can generate funding through the state to actually fund an additional 10 to 15 positions through that effort. So a lot more that we could share certainly on the great work that's happening from our Developmental Disabilities staff, but we don't always talk about it here at the board meeting. I thought it was a good opportunity to share with you the individuals in our community that are being served and the great work that our staff is doing to manage the heavy and increasing caseload there. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions on any of those topics or others if you may have them.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Ms. Mokhaisky, thank you for the last item in particular, pointing out that this was, has been Developmental Disabilities Month nationwide. And I'd like to point out that in addition to Lane County actually having staff on board, that there's a fantastic job, we also support other agencies in Lane County who are strongly involved in developmental disabilities. I'd like to call out in particular Pearl Buck Center. Jan Aho is the director of Pearl Buck Center, and she regularly attends the Human Services Commission meetings and is a regular participant. And at Pearl Buck Center, they serve obviously adults with developmental disabilities, but they also perform, I'd like to call out, the particularly interesting and complex work of working with children whose parents have disability, who have parents with developmental disabilities, which is a unique, unique element of the services provided that we don't often think about. And I'd like to once again point out that Pearl Buck is doing a tremendous job of working alongside Lane County and taking care of the urgent needs that we have in Lane County. Thank you for that report, Mr. Mokhaisky.
Any other questions? Seeing none, we'll move on to item 6C, which is, or 7C, I'm sorry, which is Order 15033106 in the matter of cosponsoring and adopting a resolution to redesignate Oak Ridge-Westphal Enterprise Zone. And it looks like we have Sarah Case, not Glenda Poling, but I see Glenda in the audience.
She's here to assist.
Sarah.
Chair Bozovic, commissioners, thank you for having us here today. Hope to not take too much of your time, but we do want to talk about an enterprise zone redesignation. As all of you are very well aware, one of the primary tools in economic development that we have to use is the enterprise zone here in Oregon and certainly locally here in Lane County. We have many of them that we are able to utilize. This one in particular, and utilize, I should say, not only for recruiting of new businesses to the area, but also in helping our local existing businesses expand here locally. This particular enterprise zone is related to the Oak Ridge-Westphal enterprise zone. It expired in December, December 31st of 2014. We knew that was going to happen and we have been working with them to put together the redesignation application. So as I mentioned, the matter here before you today is to consider cosponsoring that redesignation of the Oak Ridge-Westphal enterprise zone. The enterprise zone, I believe in the packet you have a map, and I'm not sure you can see it very well, but the enterprise zone does encompass all of the area within the city limits of Oak Ridge and Westphal. This is a pretty standard redesignation. They are asking for one exception, and that includes requesting that hotels be eligible to take use of the enterprise zone. I should also note that in Oak Ridge, we have, they have one of only two certified sites in Lane County, state certified sites. That's just another tool that we as economic developers get to utilize in doing local business development and business recruitment to the area. And they're very, very important in the work that we do. The Oak Ridge Industrial Park is a certified site for the state of Oregon and also included in the enterprise zone. So we're getting some great benefit there in terms of those economic development tools. I would also note that we have several projects that are pending in Oak Ridge and are very critical, it's very critical to go ahead and move forward, in staff's opinion, with the enterprise zone redesignation for Oak Ridge. Because of these pending projects, I can think of four off the top of my head, and all of them would be able to benefit from the enterprise zone benefit, the three and up to five-year tax abatement program. So that's what we have for you today. I can also share with you that both the city of Oak Ridge and the city of Westphal have passed board orders and resolutions moving to move forward with the redesignation process and pending your approval today, we can move forward as well. So I would be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Commissioner Stewart.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I don't have any questions. I wanted to thank Sarah and Glenda for their work on this, and I also wanted to share that in my conversations with City Manager Gomez, he was very complimentary of our Economic Development Department, specifically Glenda and Sarah, how responsive and helpful that you've been in all aspects of the economic development, whether it's trying to help them with this redesignation of the enterprise zone or the leads that you talked about, that it's exciting to see that there's some real potential. And don't know if any of them will actually take advantage of this, if it's supported or not, but I think the article that, if you got to read it, about the coordinated population levels and Oak Ridge is pretty highlighted about the fact that they don't, they're not going to experience potentially the same growth levels that other rural communities are because of the limitations that they have. And so I think it's just critical that we have all the tools at the table to help them and assist in trying to see some economic growth in Oak Ridge. So thank you for your great work and hopefully we'll see if this passes.
Commissioner Lichen.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So I just want to throw in for a moment on the permitting of hotels. So I see by statute, 285, if anybody's interested, 285(c)(070) does allow for hotel and/or resorts if the city or county wishes to seek that. So frankly, I think that's probably a long time coming, to be honest with you. I think this maybe could have been brought before the county and even the city of Oak Ridge even years ago. So I would support that. I think that makes sense, especially given where it's, the location. All they just need now is snow. And so we had that conversation with Carrie beforehand. So it's in statute, it is allowed, and so I just, I think that's important to note, even though it's a little bit unusual, but it is, it is something that's very allowable. So I appreciate that and thanks for bringing that forward as part of this, as part of this process here. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
I think our previous discussion speaks to how important, why it is that important for the Oak Ridge area and certainly not, not just for the snow, but also the summer activities and the mountain biking activities that occur up there.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I'd like to point out that this is a companion item to the previous item, Travel Lane County, and it's really an important element. You know, I'm looking at the enterprise zone map, which reaches, the enterprise zone reaches all the way up to the, up to the dam, right up to the dam itself. And, you know, there are so many things to do in and around Oak Ridge, and most of us experience Oak Ridge on Highway 58. And the businesses are along Highway 58, but if you look at the map here, Oak Ridge has, it's just a fantastic place, it's unique, it's a gem in the Cascades and anything that we can do to bring more people traveling there. And Commissioner Sorensen was talking about rail earlier. At some point, if we can get the rail stop in Oak Ridge, that's going to even add more vitality to the Oak Ridge area. So thank you very much for the presentation.
I will just add that rail is on the radar for the Oak Ridge areas.
Yep. So I'll just chime in that I like the idea of the addition of hotels in this also. And, you know, even though they don't have the snow, it just means mountain biking season starts sooner.
That's right.
I've seen a lot of mountain bikes go up the ski lifts and come back down.
It also means that maybe the poison oak won't be quite so bad this summer. Commissioner Sorensen.
Yeah, I was up Willamette Pass, I think it was in January, and I was planning to go snowshoeing at Odo Lake, but there was no snow. And so we went by Willamette Pass and there were mountain bikers coming down on Willamette Pass because there was no snow right there. There was hardly any snow on the Rosary Lakes Trail, which is a phenomenal trail right off of the, in fact, it was also mentioned in the, in the Travel Lane County report because it's part of the Pacific Crest Trail that they're highlighting. I wanted to zero in on this rail stop thing in Oak Ridge. We passed a resolution, I think Commissioner We passed a resolution, I think Commissioner Stewart sponsored, and we were hoping to find out if that's remote possibility, a real possibility. I know you spend every day on the phone with Amtrak asking them, so could you update us on, on, is that going to go anywhere, or?
I don't think we have more of an update, although I don't know if Glenda has more to share.
Who's doing, who's doing what, I guess, is the follow-up?
I'd share, Commissioner Thorson, that I'm working, I'm on a working committee at Oak Ridge that's working diligently to meet all the criteria. There's, I think I shared with the board before, it's kind of like a 10-step program, and we're on step four right now. I believe, it's my understanding, that Commissioner Farr and Mr. Kyler, when they were back at, in DC, were able to share with the appropriate people the desire of Oak Ridge to start to build this whistle stop. And currently, right now, the, I wouldn't say negotiations, but there's a lot of conversations back with UP and Amtrak because Union Pacific is requiring some pretty siding and some pretty expensive requirements. So Congressman DeFazio's office is involved with trying to see if there's some other options, but folks are really excited and very hopeful that we'll see in the next couple of years a stop there. It's my understanding that Amtrak is going to include a car that is specifically designed for bikes to be boarded easily and that, and I think it's going to get started here fairly soon. So hopefully, I know these folks are very committed, and we'll see this move forward.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff on this? Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move approval of Order 15-03-31-06 in the matter of cosponsoring and adopting a resolution of redesignation of the Oak Ridge-Westford Enterprise Zone.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing a none? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Any opposed? It passes unanimously. We're on a streak today.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So that brings us to item 7E, which is discussion and direction on the process for appointment of Lane County Sheriff. And this, we have Mr. Mokrheysky, Marcia Edwards, our Human Resources Director, and Andrea Nagles, our Assistant County Counsel. And I'll turn this over to Mr. Mokrheysky.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and commissioners. I'll just make a few introductory comments, and then Andrea and Marcia may have some additional comments to share with you. Sheriff Turner, we were notified about two weeks ago today that Sheriff Turner is the only finalist for the Florence Police Chief position, and I think we all extend our congratulations to Sheriff Turner on that opportunity. And not, many of us not surprised there. I will share with you that I had the opportunity when I first met Sheriff Turner about a year ago, when I was interviewing for this position. And a lot of people asked me, well, you know, what were the reasons that you decided to come to Lane County? And one of the things that was a big deal to me was the elected officials, the department heads that are elected officials, and just had an outstanding experience meeting and working with Sheriff Turner a year ago and for the past year, and really appreciate the relationship that we've had and the collaboration that we've had between our departments. So while this is not final, and there are some additional steps, again, I want to thank him for his leadership and partnership over the past year that I've been here. We have every reason to believe that this is going to move forward. It's my understanding that they're finalizing the process, and Sheriff Turner is here if you have questions for him on the next steps for that. If, assuming that this all moves forward, as we expect that it will, we anticipate that the sheriff will begin his service in Florence at the beginning of May, and may actually depart Lane County at the end of April. And so we wanted to come forward to you and seek direction on the process that you would like to pursue for the potential appointment of the next sheriff. There will be an election in May of 2016 for a sheriff, and so the decision before the board is to either make an appointment for the period of time between the end of April, early May, through May of 2016, and then whether or not to go through a process for that appointment, or to do nothing. And I believe state law in Lane, Lane County Charter specify that the chief deputy, in this case, Chief Deputy Trapp, would take over as the sheriff. So those are the options before you, and before, we want to make sure that we, we're going to have a relatively short period of time here to work with, that if the board did desire to move in the direction of pursuing a process of some kind that could take a few weeks to work through, that we get your direction as early as possible, and we have the ability to work through that and bring back to you the results of that process and enough time to accommodate the timeline that we're anticipating for this move to occur. So with that, if Andrea Nagles or Marcia Edwards have anything to add about state law, Lane County Charter, and the process that we potentially could do, but I think we'd like to hear from the board first, and then we can answer your questions.
So you want to hear from the board first? Commissioner Lichen, hand up there.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So a couple of things. I mean, first of all, I think the board received, we've already received a outside interest on this position, and there's an individual who used to be associated with the, with Lane County, and I believe he's in Michigan now. And then I'm going to make a giant leap and suggest that Chief Deputy Trapp is probably interested in this. So I think based on that, I think it might make sense that we do put together a process. I don't believe that we need to necessarily do a national type of search. I think if we just even, whether it's through social networking, whether it's our website, and given the fact, and I believe, Sheriff, are you, is it May 1st, or is that, is that the timeline you're looking at as far as?
Very hopefully so.
Okay. Well, let's just, let's just use that as the guideline. Let's use May 1st as the guideline. So that'll give us about, once our, we're scheduled, I know we have a down week coming up, and then you'll, you'll have to work with us on the schedule, but I'm guessing that maybe if we give ourselves maybe like three weeks, does that work, or two weeks, or you, I mean, you need to let us know on the schedule. And then why don't we do a process where, and of course, I'd like to hear from my colleagues, just thoughts here, but process, but instead of like a national search, use our website, maybe the social networking, maybe some other areas. I'm not sure what you would have there, but where we could keep it, because obviously someone's interested, and they just got that through the newspaper article. So there may be others out there that are interested, I don't know. And of course, with the assumption that Chief Deputy Trapp is also going to apply. And then that allow the board then to go through that interviewing process, allow you to go through the process to see who is legally, based on state law and also our charter, who could serve in that capacity. But those, those are some initial thoughts. I just don't think, I think, I don't believe we need to do a national search. I think that that's the big piece here, is, but instead, I think focus on our, you know, what we have internally in our website, because I'm going to guess, if one person is interested, we may get, we may get others, but I think having that process in place will be very important. It's my thoughts.
If the board should decide to go with our recruitment, we would probably strive to open it on Friday, April 3rd, and then normally we run a recruitment for two weeks.
About two weeks? Okay, that's right.
That's for the majority of our positions, we run for two weeks. And then we would close it down then on April 17th. And as normal, Human Resources would screen for the minimum qualifications and then pass on those qualified candidates to the board. You know, potentially, we could do a work session on April 22nd, if that works for the board, you know, to talk with those qualified candidates.
Okay. Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Thorson.
Sorry, I know Commissioner Thorson was next, but I just wanted to intercede here. Just the agenda team spent a lot of time talking about a potential process, and we didn't want to, you know, signal that that's what we were trying to do. We just wanted to offer an option, and because of the two down weeks that we have and a four-week period, we felt that, you know, taking advice, a couple of weeks to receive interested applications, then receive those applications, the qualified ones on the 22nd, as was said, and also have them, the individuals, be prepared for an interview that could take place, I think, on the 23rd, 22nd? On the 22nd. And then if the board needed extra time, I think Diana has asked, Ms. Jones has asked for us to consider the 28th as maybe an option. We know it's a down week, but just in case we, we needed an extra time for decision-making, that way we can make an appointment before the current sheriff leaves. So I just wanted to share that thought process as the, I think we're on a pretty tight, but I don't know unless we go into May, that if you're trying to accomplish this by May, I think that's about what our options are.
Commissioner Thorson.
I had a couple of things. The first was Ms. Nagle, Nagles?
Nagles.
With an S. Okay, Nagles. What is the process, who does the sheriff resign to? Who does the sheriff write and say, "I'm resigning"?
So there's a process under the Oregon statutes that if the sheriff is resigning, then it has to be a written resignation, and then there's a, it does need to be submitted to the Board of Commissioners.
Okay. And that hasn't been done, but as the sheriff pointed out, that'll probably be done between now and May 1st?
That's my understanding. My understanding is we have not received a written resignation from the sheriff at this time, but that would be a requirement under the statutory process.
But we can still go forward with this rather informally until such time as we do get that?
Yes, and actually, there is authority under the Oregon statutes that provides that the board can move forward at this point with the knowledge that there will be a resignation at some point in the future, and that the sheriff has accepted or conditionally accepted an offer of employment with another agency.
Okay, good. And then in terms of doing this search, from your perspective, Ms. Edwards, with an S, putting this up on the Lane County website would allow anybody with a computer, whether locally or within the state or beyond that, to apply as long as they observe the requirements, the two-week period that you're going to use?
Yes, sir.
Okay. And do you have enough time between now and Friday to get that in motion?
Yes, we do.
Uh-huh, okay. Besides, is there a residency requirement to be Lane County Sheriff?
You know what? I'm not sure of the minimum qualifications for the position right now.
Okay. But things such as being a certified police officer, or a resident, or maybe a registered voter, or other, other types of requirements will be included in the?
Yes, all the requirements by law will be required.
Okay. Can people out of state apply for this position?
Yes.
Okay.
Good.
Okay. All right. And it sounds like, is there a requirement, or is something you would put in there to include letters of reference, or how does the normal, I mean, we didn't do this before when the board appointed Sheriff Turner, but is there a requirement, is there something normally in the requirement that applicants submit references?
Not necessarily. You know, as part of the application, folks are asked to provide some references, but that does not mean letters of reference.
So maybe a contact, a name?
Application, resume, cover letter, those types of things.
Okay. All right. And then in terms of the staff that would be required to do all this, could you give us some idea of, is there any way to know, we get 10 applicants, or one, or five, or is there really any way to know how much work this is going to take?
No. Yeah, there's, there's no way to know at this point.
Okay.
I wouldn't expect an overabundance of applications, just because it is a very specialized position. But you know, certainly we're expecting some interest, we just can't gauge what that interest will look like right now.
Right. One of the interests that I have is whether the applicants for this want to seek the position more permanently by running for the position. Can we ask that question?
I suppose we could ask, but to tell you the truth, something that I may think I want to do in the future, today, I can certainly change my mind later on down the road.
Okay.
But normally with these types of positions, folks go into it knowing that they're going to have to run for election if they hope to keep the position.
Right, right, right. Okay. We have had situations over the years where we've appointed people specifically because they said they wouldn't run. So it could be, the board could be interested in both sides of that. But just speaking for myself, I'm interested in someone that not only wants the job now, but wants to run for it and really make that a commitment to the position. Thank you.
Commissioner Farr.
Thank you. Thanks for the discussion on this. You know, Sheriff Turner, when Leonard Howe was first appointed sheriff in 1851, Lane County went from Florence, Oregon, which wasn't really there at the time, all the way to the crest of the Grand Teton Mountains, and he only had one deputy to patrol the entire county. Things haven't changed too much.
Same, yeah.
So I understand that any of this discussion is contingent upon Sheriff Turner being offered the job and subsequently accepting the offer. And I know that there's a process in place right now that will, we anticipate, result in the offer of the job. And what I would like to state is that Commissioner Stewart outlined a discussion that had been, that had been had by the, by the leadership team. And I would, I would agree with that, a discussion that culminated in a decision by, before April 31st by this board, and starting as early as this Friday with a notice, and whatever the process in between there, just using those two dates as the buckends, that I trust our Human Resource Department and our, and our council to do the right things, to get things in place legally, and to make sure that we have a deliberative look at who is eligible and who is the best fit for the, to be the new sheriff. We would assume that an appointment that we make has a distinct leg up in an upcoming election, that the incumbent or quasi-incumbent sheriff would have had an opportunity to demonstrate their value on the job. So I look forward to the process. I hope we begin this Friday. I hope we end before April 31st. Thank you.
April 30th, I hope.
Yeah, that's right.
Thank you. Yeah, all of us being contingent on Sheriff Turner actually passing all the background checks, which for some weird reason, I got referenced and requested for a background check. So after I've reported all his past criminal activities and all that, I'm not so sure he'll get offered the job. No, I echo Mr. Mokrheysky, I really, I'm happy for Tom. My association with him over the last four-plus years has been great, and you know, it's a really wonderful opportunity for you down there, and because it's into my district and a position that's been in flux for so long, and it's kind of finishing up the city of Florence's permanent staff there, I really appreciate that we, you know, there'll be a nice, stable person I know running that police department down there. So I look, look forward to them finishing the process and it becoming absolutely official that May 1st, you're going to be working for, you know, one of the largest cities in Lane County, not, you know, so it's, you know, it's, I'm looking forward to that. That said, I believe, it sounds like I'm in agreement with most of the board here, that we've already seen one outside interest, you know, and I don't, you know, I believe we've got some time. We're a little bit ahead of the budget cycle here, timing-wise, unlike, you know, our, our last time, we're in the middle of trying to make $8 million worth of cuts in the general fund, and it was later in the budget cycle, and when we got Sheriff Berger's, you know, retirement then. So it's, we have a little bit more time, so I think the ability to open it up and get, you know, spend two weeks, see who's interested, and then we have a you know, spend two weeks, see who's interested, and then we have a, you know, panel, you guys screen, see if they meet the minimum qualifications according to statute and code. We get back those folks. We hold open, the 22nd, by the way, is a Wednesday, it's a normal work session day. I would plan the whole day as a board to hold that open because we don't know how many applicants we'll get. We can offer the applicants an opportunity, you know, five minutes to address the board or whatever. You know, the board, you know, can discuss the applicants at that time, might reserve the right to do, to go into executive session to discuss the hiring of personnel, may not even do that, we may just directly make a decision then. We may not be ready to make a decision then, which is why I'd like to try and hold the 28th open, just in case. I'm hoping we can come to a decision on the 22nd. But I support that process. We open for applicants on the 3rd, close the application process on the 17th. That'll give you guys, you know, you can kind of give maybe a quick report under county administration on the 21st in our regular board meeting, how many applicants you got, so that gives us an idea of what we're looking at the next day on the 22nd as far as length of a work session. But basically, all applicants should know in the advertisement that they need to be available to attend a board meeting on the 22nd and/or at least be available by phone or some kind of telecommunication so that there's the ability to have some back and forth between board members and the applicant that desires the position. So want to make sure that's included as part of the advertising.
Commissioner Farr?
Just one clarification. You know, one of the earliest things I remember from my childhood growing up in England is a little rhyme we used to say, "Thirty days, half September, April, June, and November." So of course, April 30th, not 31st. Thanks for pointing that out, Mr. Boezer.
The only reason I know is adding my calendar up. I can never remember that dang rhyme. Any other questions or comments?
I just want to thank you for the preparation for today and also the direction to get the word out via the internet, and I'm sure that this is an opportunity for people within the department and other law enforcement agencies in the state or maybe even beyond to apply and put their best foot forward and give us their background, and then we'll take it from there. I think it's a good idea. Are you going to screen these yourself for minimum qualifications or how are you going to, assuming you get some response in two weeks, what, two and a half weeks, what would it be?
Probably the HR analyst that works on the recruitment will screen those applications.
Okay. All right. And you're pointedly not going to send this out to anyone? You're not going to send it to law enforcement? It's just a matter of word of mouth and the website?
Yeah, it'll be on the internet, so basically it's out there every day.
Okay. Okay. Are there job search firms that look at websites so that they can put it on their website?
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so that's a fairly common thing in this day and age?
Yes, it is.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Mr. Mokrheisky?
Yeah, I'll put myself back in the queue. I was just going to add that we certainly can send out a news release and utilize social media to push that information out and make it as readily accessible to, you know, recruiting agencies or individuals that they want it. So we use, we use all of those, all of those sort of typical processes that we would use to post a position and make sure that it gets out to the widest audience.
Thank you. And I will point out that already just the media coverage to date has brought interest from the upper Midwest, so it's not like, you know, anyone that's really thinking about, you know, Lane County in Oregon and keeping track of law enforcement positions, particularly in the command structure, are probably, you know, seeing these kind of stories or have them set up on their, on their Google Alerts, you know, and get those sort of stories. And I will also note that we have, you know, our largest newspaper in the room and representatives from our three local stations in the room, so TV stations, so I believe you will hear this in tomorrow, in the evening news tonight, tomorrow's newspaper, and probably in the news cycle for the next 24 hours, whatever we decide here. That said, I would like to provide through a motion, clear direction to staff, because this is about deciding on a choice between three processes, and I want to have that done as a vote of the board, if you don't mind. You know, our choices were, you know, we could directly appoint somebody today, we could, you know, open the process as we discussed, or we could choose to do nothing and then the default would be the undersheriff is automatically appointed according to law or chief deputy, as they now call. So one thing I appreciate Tom did was the undersheriff sheriff, it kind of got confusing. So with that, it sounds like we have general support from the discussion about the process. I just want to make sure that people are clear of dates when they make the motion, open the recruitment and advertise it on April 3rd, Friday, April 3rd, close the recruitment on April 17th. Then our HR staff will just look at purely minimum qualifications and weed out any of that don't meet minimum qualifications. And then we will have a work session on April 22nd where we will offer five minutes of time for candidate to speak to the board and at the same time, give us the opportunity to discuss the candidates, I believe will probably, you think by the 21st, we'll be able to see the qualified candidates that will be distributed to the board at that time. So we'll have the applicant overnight to review the actual applicants. Also, it's my intention to have public comment available on the 22nd before we start that meeting. So if there are people that want to come in and testify relative to, you know, what they think our decision should be or where we should be in the process, there'll be opportunity then, just as there was public comment today, people could have come in and talked about the process we might want to do. So with that, is there anyone that wishes to make a motion?
Mr. Chair, I would move that we choose option one, which is exactly what you just stated, where we would do a two-week open recruitment process and go through the process of looking at potential candidates.
There are second? Second? Commissioner Stewart?
Mr. Chair, I just want to speak to this. I know we have interested party Chief Deputy Trapp here. I want to make it clear that I'm not making this motion because I don't have any confidence or I'm wavering. I believe you would make a great sheriff and I have full confidence. I greatly appreciate working with you. I just know that this board and several of the members want to have open processes to make sure that all the bases are covered, and I support that open process for ultimately the best person will receive the position. So I just want to let you know I have full confidence in you and interested to see the process come through. And if my memory is correct, we, I don't believe we received a single additional interested person when it came time to appointing Mr. Turner into the sheriff's position. So we're already in a different position than we were when we had made the consideration for filling the former sheriff Berger's position. So I just wanted to give an explanation so that there's no concerns behind the scenes.
Commissioner Farr?
Thank you. You know, with the background in human resource, I'm excited to see how you operate on short notice such as this. I know in the olden days, the old days of technology, people used to, law enforcement agencies used to put out on teletype when positions were open. Is there a similar process that you'd send out where basically anybody who in law enforcement agencies across the nation, for that matter, would have an opportunity to see, well, there is an opening here?
Well, actually, all of our openings are posted on the internet, so that means they're not only national, they're international. So it's out there as soon as it's on the website. And there are, you know, specific recruiting agencies that go out there and cherry pick positions that they might be interested in. There's also routine folks that we send it to that, you know, just to keep them informed of our openings.
And so no specific flag for law enforcement agencies other than the general broadcast unless a recruitment agency puts it out?
That's true. That's true.
Okay. All right. All right, so shoot, let's bring back the teletype.
Any other discussion to the motion?
Apparently it's also available via telegraph. No, thank you so much for this motion and for consideration of the idea of having a two-week period. I don't think that's too long. I think that's pretty good. And if people are following this and have been following it for some time, then they're aware that this is a position that we're interested in filling. Like Commissioner Stewart, I don't think that having this be a two-week recruitment process means that we've ruled anyone out or anyone in. It just means we'd like to see the applications for people that are interested. And I'm supporting this motion for those reasons. Thank you.
Any other discussion to the motion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously, and we are definitely on a streak. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, commissioners.
And that brings us down to 8A, Commissioner's Business Announcements. Are there any announcements from commissioners? Commissioner Farr?
Yeah, there's a process that's going on in and around us right now. It's called Envision Eugene. We all, all of those who started on this years and years ago thought it would have been over long before now, but Envision Eugene continues. And this afternoon at 2:00, the, what's called the Community Resource Group will be reconvened. It's a large group of the original folks who began discussing Envision Eugene back in 18, no, excuse me, it was about five years ago, I believe. So it's, so the discussion will be going on at St. Mary's Church today at 2:00. The original group was about 75 people. I'm not sure exactly how many people will convene today, but it's going to be a large group discussion regarding the process for expansion of the city of Eugene's urban growth boundary, which the county commissioners will be a factor in the ultimate decision-making on that. The, as we have heard, the city of Eugene had a clerical error, quote unquote, that caused many more lots to be available for development in South Eugene than they had anticipated before. So a discussion is going to be surrounding, does the city of Eugene need to expand the urban growth boundary for residential in addition to the industrial that is already stated that it would expand the urban growth boundary for? Something that has happened in the meantime, there's been a new population forecast for the next 20 years in Lane, in the city of Eugene. It's increased pretty significantly from the original presumptions that were a part of Envision Eugene. And a part of the discussion today is, will the city of Eugene use the new population forecast to determine whether or not more residential land is needed outside of the existing urban growth boundary? It's ongoing discussion. It's not over yet, and there'll be a robust discussion about it today, and the discussion will continue at the Eugene City Council. And at some point in the next, it's difficult to predict how long it's going to take, but at some point soon, we'll know if the city of Eugene will be considering an expansion of the urban growth boundary. As it sits right now, the statement is that they will not be expanding the urban growth boundary for residential purposes, but that is based on old population projections. Thank you.
Any other announcements? Commissioner Stewart?
Commissioner Farr, I want to thank you for bringing that forward. It seems to me that those numbers came out in a good time for folks that have spent a lot of time in this process to be able to have the best available numbers prior, factored in prior to making a decision. So I know that in decision-making processes that, all of them that I've been through, you want to and use the best available information at the time. If you don't, it could end up meaning that your process is not, it might have a flaw. So it'll be interesting to see how that information is used in the future.
And I will be attending the meeting today as a part of the original CRG, and I'll make a report back sometime, perhaps by the end of the day tomorrow, just based on, to each of the commissioners, based on what I hear today.
Thank you. Commissioner Lichten?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Real quickly, as one of the champions and even one of the authors of House Bill 3337, it was actually passed in 2007 by a 50 to 5 vote and a 2062 vote in the Senate, and signed by then-Governor Kuligowski, and here we are in 2015. Thank you, Commissioner Farr, for bringing that forward. And it kind of gives you an idea of, I'm not sure I've ever seen anything like this, take so long just to look at trying to come up with land availability for a community, but, you know, we're in the land of process. So thank you for bringing that up.
Thank you. And I too appreciate you bringing that back up and attending that CRG meeting. You know, while you're discussing the fact of using the most recent population data, which, you know, they've taken so long in the process, there's better data, better projections available now, and understanding that it's a simple computer model that they just have to punch those numbers into to change the projected need for lots, is it's not like going back to step one, it's just a matter of inputting data. Along with that, there may, there ought to be reconsideration of the housing mix that they put into that. The traditional housing mix of Eugene is 61% single-family, 39% multifamily. Assuming that it's somehow ever going to magically drop to 55% single-family, 45% multifamily, I think is a presumption that's not based on fact or trend. And I think it's something, and it's another item that's a simple data point entered into their computer program to generate the residential lands needs. Along with that, this clerical era in the South Hills needs to be based on clear and objective standards of development. The South Hills study has been determined by the state to not be completely clear and objective, because it leaves a lot of choice in how you develop land in the South Hills, one of which is it's very difficult to develop anything over 20%. And there are lots over 30, that are up to 30% that are included in the current clerical era inventory. So I have real difficulty looking at that, saying it's based on clear and objective standards for the number of lots they're going to get in the South Hills, having worked as a civil engineer for developers in the South Hills previously. So if, you know, I appreciate you being there and carrying those messages forward. I know this will eventually get to us, eventually, like Commissioner Lichten pointed out, was that 2007? That's an awful long time. They're going to take 20 years to get to having a plan for a 20-year inventory. Any other announcements from board members? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda team requests. Are there any agenda team requests? Commissioner Farr?
Just for a beginning of a discussion, you know, we did have 30 minutes for Travel Lane County today, and I think at some point, if you all could discuss, maybe having a larger agenda item, not to discuss, not to have a report from them, but just to discuss some of the things that we began to talk about today, some of the things that Travel Lane County is instrumental in helping us to move forward as far as our economy and their mission of increasing nights spent in Lane County.
I think I would support that. It seems like, you know, we could spend, you know, an entire hour just on their sports marketing program. I mean, it's just, it's, you know, one aspect to another to another, they just don't seem to.
Talk about it.
Yeah, so I don't know if there's, is there support from, it seems like Commissioner Lichten is nodding his head, and Commissioner Stewart and Commissioner Sorenson, so that seems like we've got our three physical acquiesces to a future agenda item, so we'll note that for the agenda team to try and maybe bring Carrie and some of her group back to get in more detail about other aspects that we just barely grazed the surface of today. So I appreciate you bringing that up. Any other agenda team requests? Seeing none, we'll get into review of assignments. Mr. Mokrheisky?
That was one. We'll do a scheduled work session with Travel Lane County. That's, I'm thinking that's likely to happen in the June, July, August timeframe, just given the budget process in May and our lack of availability in April. the budget process in May and our lack of availability in April. April 14th, we moved the item, our internal performance auditor was not able to be here today. We've scheduled that for April 14th. So you can mark that in your calendars, and that'll be on future board items. And then April 22nd, of course, we'll be back with a work session and discussion on the appointment of a sheriff. So those were the three items that I heard.
Anybody have anything else? Your review of assignments? Seeing none. There's no need for an executive session today. Is there any other business for the board today? Seeing and hearing none, I will adjourn this meeting. Thank you.